Good evening and welcome to the Saco City Council meeting for Monday, October 17th, 2002. Recognition of all councilor members present this evening. Mayor Doyle is off and Deputy Mayor McPhail will be presiding. Please join me standing to the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the Pride of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
There is no general items this evening. Are there any committee correspondence to council? Counselor Johnston?
Thank you. So I think it's probably old news at this point, but the school construction, the full committee did meet about two weeks ago and they did vote to forward a recommendation for in support of the Claire parcels for the new school site. I believe the school board voted last week unanimously in support of that. And so from my position, I think that I'll be presenting to council a resolution with the basis that this is city-owned land. I think it's imperative that the school department has some actual commitment from this council. So I will be submitting that resolution for next week. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other committee correspondence to council? Okay, so no council member recognized. Item number six, public comment. We have no one signed up. If there is anyone from the audience who would wish to speak, please step up to the podium. And remember to please state your name, address, and keep your comments to three minutes.
Yes, my name is Greg Polk, Ten Minetta Drive, Cascade Falls Community. And I'm on the HOA committee there. So I had a question and understand that I probably won't get my answer right here directly tonight, but that's okay. Public roads, making our roads in Cascade Falls public. The developer has had a punch list that was given by Joe, the city engineer, and actually, there's being some work done on the punch list now. So that's being, that's being worked on. But I have not been able to, because I'm on the Architectural and Grounds Committee, I have not been able to get that punch list for our community so we could understand what is on that punch list. So that is one of my questions that I'd like to have answered later on. The other part is, what is the process? I see tonight that you had public roads or private roads being turned over to public roads to the city of Saco. What is the process after the punch list is done? Who approves that punch list? Does it have to go? I'm looking, I'm looking at the other public roads that are being submitted tonight. It looks like the planning board has to approve what that punch list has done. It looks like the city council has to approve what that punch list is. I'd like to know what the timeframes are of how long that that takes to get that process approved fully so the roads can be turned over. Because I've been told by Joe, the city engineer, that it's usually September of each year that, that you have to have everything in so the roads can be taken over for the winter maintenance by the city of Saco. So those are some of my questions. I hope I didn't take all my three minutes. So have a good night.
Thank you. Is there any member of the public wishing to speak?
Hi, Jody. Jack Hughes. I guess I can talk now because I arrive on the agenda late.
Please state your name and address for the record.
Jack Hughes, Seven Pearl Avenue, Saco, Maine. I've talked to a number of you folks before about a request that my wife and I have to try and purchase a small parcel of land between our property and the seawall. And I've been to many meetings here a couple years ago by Zoom. And I'm just asking the city council's consideration because at the end of the day, as I found out going through all the steps, that the city council is responsible for the sale of that little piece of land. And so I wanted to make sure I was here to present my wife and my case, that we think that piece of land is of value only to us, does not represent anything that the city of Saco needs. We are willing to purchase the land, pay the taxes on it, continue the upkeep on it, which is not inexpensive after a Maine winter. And I just want to make sure that people understand all the facts. Because as I argue all the facts, I think we have a pretty strong case. And I'm here to implore the city council to at least hear me out. And whatever they would like, we're very compliant because it's very important to us. I don't know what else to say. I've got pictures, I got maps, I got all sorts of stuff that I think are informative and I think will help everybody to come to what I hope is a very reasonable conclusion.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any other member of the public wishing to speak? Not seeing anyone wishing to be recognized. We will move on to item number seven, and that's the approval of the minutes from September 26 and October 3 of 2022. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Counselor Berman. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Johnston. Roll call vote. Counselor Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Approval of the minutes, motion passes six zero. There are no consent items on the agenda this evening, which brings us to action item number nine on the agenda. Action item A, first reading, budget amendment number two, fire department, HVAC, air handling unit. Counselor Purdy?
Just a moment, let me get to it. Over the past several years, steps have been taken to address the HVA system mold issues at the fire stations. The problem has been rectified, but the final most important step is prevention. To prevent this from occurring again, fresh air being brought into the building needs to be conditioned first. This will require a rooftop unit that with full retrofit and installation will cost approximately $110,000. Be it ordered that city council approves the first reading of budget amendment number two FY 2023 and moves to schedule a second and final reading for October 24th, 2022. I move to approve the order.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Purdy, second by Counselor Hatch. Any discussion? Not seeing any discussion. Roll call vote. Counselor Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes six zero. Moving on to action item B, one reading, budget amendment number three, Purple Park Playground. Counselor Johnston?
Playground at Purple Park or Fairfield School is nearing the end of its life. It was built in 1998 and is the oldest playground that the Saco Parks and Recreation Department maintains. It is one of our most used playgrounds and the structure is showing extreme wear and tear. The attached pictures show that the rust has begun to create holes and will soon make the play structure unsafe. Parks and Recreation Department has maintained the structure for years by replacing broken pieces and bolts. The bridge has been replaced, but now that the structure is nearing its end of, nearing its end of life, the department feels that it is best to replace the whole structure rather than continuously trying to fix this end-of-life equipment. By allocating the funds and ordering the play structures soon, we will ensure that the playground will be installed by the spring of next year. Because of supply issues and delays, it takes approximately four to six months to get the playground built, delivered, and installed. Where this is amendment, it's qualified use of existing special revenue funds. Rather than an appropriation of taxes or unassigned fund balance, the amendment will be a single reading in line with past practice for similar, such amendments, such as changes to use of TIF funds, and does not require a formal exhibit of account changes. Parks and Recreation Advisory Board unanimously recommends a budget amendment of $50,000 for the replacement of Purple Park. Be it ordered that the city council confirm the amount of $50,000 for the remaining balance of the ARPA funds to be used for replacement of Purple Park Playground.
Motion made by Counselor Johnston. Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Second by Counselor Hatch. Any discussion? Counselor Berman?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. Ah, for the $50,000 and the playground. I am just wondering about the use of ARPA funds versus undesignated fund. I thought we had a pretty healthy undesignated fund balance also. I'm wondering if anyone can speak to the decision to use ARPA rather than undesignated funds for this purchase.
We do have Director Summers available. I'm not sure if, or if City Administrator Ken Rath can take it.
Yeah, just really quick. If you remember, we had about $350,000 left of ARPA funds after the budget process last year. Those have to be spent by next fiscal year. There's also an effort by finance, of course, to limit our exposure and use of fund balance when we don't have to and not to sort of just be using it as a, as a piggy bank per se. So I think the more prudent, you know, measure will be to take it out of ARPA since that $350 is sitting there and has an expiration date than to use it out of unassigned fund balance.
Counselor Berman?
Just a follow-up question. I thought I remembered that our last budget update at the, that the fund balance was approaching the statutory limit. Is that no longer the case? Have we spent down from there?
So that's 16 point something percent. I think we were at 13 or 14 the last update, but I'd have to go back and look. So unless we're over 16, there's really no, you know, immediate need to start drawing down on the sun fund balance.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Any other, Counselor Johnston?
Thank you. Yeah, I don't have much more to add from prior weeks. I think it's pretty clear that the structure needs to be replaced. I did want to thank Director Summers for, for working with me along with the Parks and Rec Advisory Board for their support and hopefully council. And of course, you know, the many community members that have reached out to us with emails and, you know, other communications. I think that this place structure is a great example of, you know, what can happen when community members come together for, you know, a common cause or a common good. So just thank everybody for that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion or comments? Not seeing any hands raised. Roll call vote. Counselor Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes six zero. Next up, action item C, one reading, petition for city acceptance of new public street, Sancho Drive and Jenny's Way, precious hidden estate subdivision. Counselor Purdy?
Thank you. Jason Labonte requests city acceptance of new public streets, Sancho Drive and Jenny's Way in accordance with section 911 of Saco subdivision ordinance and chapter 186 of Saco City Code, city acceptance, city acceptance of improvements. These streets were approved as part of the precious hidden estate subdivision in 2017. The project included 48 residential lots on the new streets, which are accessed from New County Road per the recorded subdivision plan. City Attorney Tim Murphy and City Engineer Joe LaBarriere determined the project to be complete and found the as-built plan, the meets and bounds description, and the deed of session to be accurate and acceptable. The planning board voted six zero to forward a positive recommendation to the city council during their September 6 meeting. I move to accept Sancho Drive and Jenny's Way as public city streets.
Motion made by Counselor Purdy. Is there a second?
Second.
Who's that? Counselor Berman? Okay, second by Counselor Berman. Any discussion or comments? Not seeing any hand raised. Roll call vote. Counselor Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes six zero. Okay, that completes the action items. Item number 10 on the agenda is new business. New business A, street acceptance, Layton Way. I believe we have City Planner Garnum. Did you present that?
Thank you. Good evening. So the developer of the Innis Landing subdivision requests public acceptance of Layton Way. This is access from Flag Pond Road and Jenkins Road and is serving the subdivision, which is for 16 residential lots. As with the other street acceptance requests that you've seen lately, this is before you and the planning board because both the developer, the cit, and the city engineer and city attorney find that this is substantially ready. We have a punch list from, that was most recently updated, updated on October 3, which has just a few more outstanding items, which we will be sure to make sure are complete before it comes to you for final acceptance. And as mentioned in my memo to you, the planning board forwarded a positive recommendation to you by voting six zero at the October 4 meeting. Be happy to take any questions.
Any questions for City Planner Garnum? Counselor Johnston?
Thank you. It's not really a question, just I'm happy to know that the punch list will be complete. But I did notice that, I think it was page two of the punch list, wasn't in the packet. So just need to add that for the next one so I can fully read it.
Any other questions or comments? Counselor Archer?
Yes, thank you, Deputy Mayor. Doesn't apply to this, but a few years ago, council had approved some other considerations, such as it had to be a through street. I do recognize that this one meets that demand by hitting Flag Pond over Jenkins. But could we get that to council? A few years ago, we had approved the council, it was the past council just said they can't be just like dead-end streets. I just approved the Sancho Drive one because I recognized that it was approved prior to that rule, but I don't remember exactly when that rule went into effect. And Counselor Johnson was-
Thank you. I was gonna say, I think you're referring to what is a well-known pet peeve of mine, which is dead-end streets. And-
Yeah.
I said at that time, I personally wouldn't accept any dead-end streets. And there was discussion during the ZOR's process, but it's again, one of those outstanding items that we haven't addressed. So it never officially was accepted. It is something I would like to see, but that's my personal opinion on that, that we only have through streets.
So if I'm understanding correctly, there was an intention to include in the subdivision regulations a requirement that public streets connect, provide future connectivity for adjacent properties and that, that didn't happen, if I'm hearing correctly?
Yeah, I think the intent was that it should only be part of that subdivision, but it's connected, that it's accessibly accessible to the public and therefore it should-
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Counselor Gunn?
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. Just as a clarifying question, because I remember that conversation when I was in the audience, I think when council had it. Was the intent for that rule to be that it was like a hard rule that only streets that had a throughway to another street be accepted, or if the developer had it in mind, met all the other regulations in terms of having a public, a public street accepted, but hadn't got around to actually doing the street yet though, but they still had everything else, met all the other things? Was the idea that the council would still would hold off on accepting that as a public way until the street was actually made a throughway? Does anyone know that?
I would say the intent was to not outright disallow them. I'd have to show you examples where we have, you know, a cul-de-sac essentially that goes to nowhere and you're essentially approving a city-owned street that services four or five homes. And it's a, it's a much larger conversation because I think at the time I brought it up, I would be, you know, in favor of at least the conversation of maybe potentially extending how many private homes we allow on a private road so that we wouldn't have these city-owned streets. But again, it's a separate conversation than what we're talking about.
Yeah, it's really a requirement that would impact the initial design of subdivisions. And it is, it is a requirement that I'm very familiar with. So I'm not, I'm frankly not surprised to hear from you on that.
Thank you. Just thought it was prudent to have a clarification, at least at this point, before we get into that conversation. So at least the public knows that there was a previous conversation with the intent was of the previous council before we will start debating it, if we even have that debate.
And a requirement like that would facilitate development of back lots and also potentially limit the number of street connections on your, on your connector and arterial streets. So it's a, it's a common requirement.
Okay, great. Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Okay, not seeing any. This will be on a future agenda. As planning liaison, Counselor Purdy, are you willing to- As planning liaison, Counselor Purdy, are you willing to accept?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, new business, item B, chapter eighty-one, Pearl Ave. Chapter eighty-one, request to purchase city-owned property, nine Pearl Avenue, tax map one, lot thirty-six. And City Planner Garnum?
Thank you. You already heard from Mr. Hughes a few minutes ago. Jack Hughes submitted a chapter eighty-one petition to potentially purchase the property located at seven Pearl Ave. That's lot thirty-seven, tax map one, located out in Camp Ellis. The property that he would like to purchase is next door to a property that Mr. Hughes owns and has a single-family residence on it. And that lot seven, the subject property, is comprised primarily of seawall and a small bit of public beach and a small bit of, well, sand at the top of the seawall. Mr. Hughes submitted this petition with a couple of goals in mind. One is to enable him to continue to replenish sand behind the seawall that he evidently performs every spring on areas that are partly public property. And also to, he would like to increase the size of the deck on his property. To paint a picture of the, of the planning board meeting, I think many of the things that Mr. Hughes is requesting seem reasonable to planning board members and staff. However, we do have comments from both the Public Works Director and the city attorney advising you and the planning board not to sell the property because of the potential need for the city to own it in the future for potential seawall improvements or other Army Corps of Engineer projects. So as you can see, the planning board did forward a negative recommendation to you at a vote of five to one from their September meeting. Do you have any questions for me?
Any questions or concerns? Counselor Hatch?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor McPhail. Jason, are there any, any other possible remedies to this other than selling the land? And I'm asking you through ignorance, I don't know, but are there any provisions within the ordinance that we might be able to explore?
I meant to talk about that in my introduction. The most obvious pathway for something like this is the variance process. However, the criteria for approval of a variance essentially require the applicant to demonstrate hardship of some kind or that, you know, the property can't be used in its current configuration in accordance with the regulations. It's clear that that is not the case here. Contract zone agreement, I suppose, could be an option for the applicant. Another tool that I'm familiar with and is not available to staff or the planning board here in Saco, at the moment anyway, is so-called administrative variances, which, and they're not currently in Saco zoning ordinance, but in other municipalities, there are procedures for staff or the planning board or the code officer or some designated authority to grant certain variances from the numeric standards of the zoning ordinance, provided the applicant can demonstrate that certain criteria are met, namely, you know, health and safety regulations and things like that. And Mr. Hughes's deck expansion would be a perfect application for something like that because it's obvious that as the ocean being the only neighbor, you know, there wouldn't be any potential conflicts with fire code or, you know, utility easements and things like that. I'm not necessarily putting in a pitch for you to recommend that we proceed with an ordinance amendment because of course, creation of that tool means that other people can use it too. I have no idea if that's something that you want to encourage, but those are a couple of things that I'm aware of.
Thank you. Counselor Archer and Counselor Berman?
Yes, thank you Deputy Mayor. I believe this is the second time it's come forward in the last five years and it was not looked at at the first time. However, since then, again, we always learn new information and we evolve in our understanding is that I still maintain that it needs to remain in the public interest hand. However, could there be a negotiation, and again, I haven't spoken with him yet, in a long-term lease that the city could break in the event of a need? For example, we lease it to the individual in which they triple-net, where they pay the taxes and things like that, they are allowed to build the deck and so on. However, if that need comes to on behalf of the city, we still own the rights to that land in which we would then have access to take it back, to include the deck and anything like that. But if we're talking about a twenty-year relationship and where the city does nothing and that allows for an individual to enjoy the property that they have and things like that, could there be a negotiation similar to what I just stated? Again, it's very arbitrary, there's been no real discussion. But is there a solution to this problem that could exist where the city still maintains the rights, but it can be semi-developed in the sense over time?
It would make sense that there would be some sort of pathway for that. It's not, it's not something the planning department would typically manage.
It sounds like legal, but is there a path to something where the city retains the rights but allows the neighbor, the direct abutter, to enjoy the property?
There has to be. Cities lease public properties to all kinds of entities quite commonly, so I'm sure there is.
Because I'd be interested in that conversation.
And Jason, just because the property's not being developed, he needs the additional land, increases the lot size to be able to build the deck, but the deck would not actually be, or maybe I'm wrong, on this lot, or it would be?
Actually, that's correct, Brian. Mr. Hughes needs additional square footage on his property in order to increase the size of his deck because he's already hitting the, I believe, the lot coverage limit and so on. So yeah, this is an important distinction. Thank you.
Counselor Berman?
Yeah, thank you. I have another comment, but I'd like to restrict myself right now to questions for the planner that are a little unclear to me. My understanding from talking to, I think it's Dr. Hughes, that he doesn't want to purchase all of what used to be lot nine, but just the land up to the seawall. Is that your understanding too, and is that what the planning board considered?
Yeah, Mr. Hughes made it clear that he doesn't necessarily need to buy all of it, and that was definitely described in our documents and presentations to the board.
And then one of the aspects that I saw that the planning board considered was that the city may need access to that land for maintenance or future project expansions. Is there currently, does the city currently have access, or would they need to cross private land in order to access the city-owned portion of what used to be lot nine?
Well, it depends on your mode of transport. It's city property and you can get there from Pearl Avenue on foot, but certainly you could not get any kind of vehicle or large machinery to do construction.
So if that land was needed for maintenance of the seawall and/or Army Corps mitigation, Mr. Hughes would already have to cooperate to gain access to that space. Is that correct?
Well, presumably. Depends on what's being done and where things are coming from, but most likely.
And so whether the property was sold or not, that aspect may remain the same, that we'd have to have a cooperating neighbor for the city to bring equipment down there for creating the seawall?
Presumably.
And then my second question is, you know, so I've been part of a couple of Army Corps conversations, but only over the last, you know, two years where I've been on council. I know there were conversations that preceded that also. But in none of the conversations I've been party to has this stretch of seawall or this property or the Pearl Ave area been brought up as necessary for the project, or has the Army Corps explained any projects occurring on that property? Is that your understanding too, or is there information I'm unaware of?
I don't even have that much information.
Just say that is my understanding. In the three years I've been here, I have not heard anything about that seawall or that particular location, as Counselor Berman just.
My understanding is that the work, the Volkswagen-sized rocks are going to be brought in by barge to build the jetty spur. And then the beach fill will also largely occur, but they'll be trucking in sand, but they'll do so from the pier side to fill that sand, not from Pearl Avenue. I'm just wondering if any of this, some of the concerns the planning board had, was that based on information from the Army Corps or just general concerns that we don't know and therefore we need the most cautious route?
It was the latter. We did not, I did not have any information about potential construction methods or routes of access or anything. All the planning board and myself had were those statements from the Public Works Director and the city solicitor.
Thank you. So do you have some more comments? But those are all my questions for the planner. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Counselor Johnston?
Thank you. So I understand that this, the request was made and therefore has to move through the process, but as I recall, we voted on this and voted it down March of two thousand twenty-one, I believe. So I guess from my perspective, it's a bit frustrating to see something we've already dealt with take time from the planning board and council when we've consistently have other things we've stated that haven't been addressed. To me, it's almost a bit unfair when myself and several other counselors have asked items to be addressed. But with that said, I would be agreeable, as Counselor Archer has stated, to working out something creative, but I remain where I was a year plus ago, but the sale of the land makes no sense to me. Until we have that PPA and a clear understanding of what the Army Corps wants from us, I don't think selling anything down there makes any sense whatsoever. Thank you.
Counselor Purdy?
Thank you Deputy Mayor. So is the, the problem with the deck, is it's lot coverage, is it, or is it setback?
Could be both.
Okay. I mean, I'd certainly like to try to find a way to help, help Mr. Hughes, you know, within the bounds of our existing ordinances. I understand the staff and planning boards hesitant to sell the land, you know, for access for construction or whatever and public access, but Counselor Archer, Counselor Archer's idea is to lease was something I hadn't, hadn't thought of. And I'm wondering if, and these are probably all questions more suited to the city attorney than anyone, but, or even, even if we could lease just a portion of the land, enough, enough so that he could build the deck. I mean, if he needs, I don't know, you know, three feet, I mean, I don't know the square footage, the math, how all the math works out, so.
I think given the nature of the problem as highlighted by the city administrator, I think honestly, a contract zone agreement is probably the most efficient solution. I know that that tool is not always popular, but.
Thank you so much. Any other, Counselor Archer?
So that I hear correctly, that again, a potential solution, I'm not holding anybody accountable, we haven't really talked about it, especially with the interested party, is that we could do a long-term lease, and again, dollar figure, could be a dollar to whatever's in agreement, and then a contract zone, and it would allow the individual to at least have a deck for the next lease, whatever that's determined to be, and the contract zone would allow the construction of a porch with the understanding that it may have to be torn down if, to meet cities' needs in the future. That could be a possible solution.
Could be, could be a solution. Yes.
Well, I'd be interested in more conversation on that.
But I think just to reiterate, the deck would not be on this lot, correct Jason?
The deck, I believe, unless Mr. Hughes's plans are expanding in his mind right now, I believe the deck would be on this lot, but it needs to occupy more of it than the zoning currently allows. The replenishment of sand on the top side of the seawall, that is occurring on city property. And I believe Mr. Hughes intends to continue doing that whether you grant him formal permission or not. That's my words, not his.
Counselor Johnston, then Counselor Berman?
All the questions to the city administrator, once the latest update from the Army Corps, have we heard back from them at all? Do we, how close do you believe we may be towards?
You know, as it has been with the Army Corps, the timeframes are somewhat vague, but we should be receiving a draft PPA at any time. There's been no exact date given, but I would anticipate it, you know, hopefully in the coming months.
Counselor Berman?
Just a couple of, I think, are small points. The last time, this was before council, it was a number of properties, including some of Mr. Hughes's neighbors, some of which were actually larger in size and may have been more concern to the council at the time. I heard another counselor refer to maybe he only needs three feet, and looking at the pictures, I'm not sure there are more than three feet that he would be purchasing. It's a very small sliver of land that we're talking about, and I just, I just think the council should keep that in mind, one that doesn't provide access to anything that anyone else can access without, looks to me on the map without crossing Mr. Hughes's yard, except for maybe by walking on top of the seawall. And as I understand it, part of his motivation is for the deck, and another part simply for erosion maintenance. And there's a, he does fear for the integrity of his property and yard and deck as the sea washes up and reclaims sand all the time. And as the person already performing maintenance on this land in order to keep the sea away, he feels some desire to then own the land that he's been obligated to maintain in order to protect his house, which creates a second motivation and a piece of fairness in my mind.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay.
So just so we're clear, I believe I hear consensus, the famous consensus, to move this forward onto an agenda for further consideration. So we'll plan on doing that unless there are objections or there is not a consensus.
As planning liaison, Counselor Purdy, would you be willing to take that?
Yeah.
Okay, and that is it for new business. Item eleven, administrative update. City Administrator Ken Ross?
Thank you. Camp Ellis Architectural Survey. We're excited to announce that the Camp Ellis Architectural Survey and Climate Resiliency Final Report has been released. Over the summer, the Saco Historic Preservation Commission contracted with Kleinfelder to complete this grant-funded initiative. One hundred and thirty-four properties within the Camp Ellis neighborhood were surveyed to determine eligibility for historic designation. The Kleinfelder team then used the gathered information from the surveys to develop resiliency options for these properties. The Camp Ellis Architectural Survey and Climate Resiliency Project would not have been possible without the efforts of Isabel Exley, the previous Saco Planning and Development Coordinator. Isabel applied for and was awarded a thirteen thousand five hundred dollar CLG grant in two thousand twenty-one for this project. The cumulative efforts of the Saco Historic Preservation Commission, the Kleinfelder team, and the Saco Planning Department resulted in the now-available final report. All interested parties can access the Camp Ellis Architectural Survey and Climate Resiliency Final Report on the Saco Historic Preservation Commission's city website. Any questions regarding the final report can be directed to Shannon, our current Assistant City Planner. Second, I just wanted to formally announce that we have moved forward with a new Economic Development Director. After reviewing many candidates, I'm pleased to announce that the city has named Tracy DeJardins, the current Economic Development Director or immediately past director for the city of Gardner, to the position. Tracy has also served with the cities of Lisbon, Auburn, and Waterville over the past twenty-five years in economic development. In addition, Tracy is currently President of the Economic Development Council of Maine and the immediate past president of the Maine Community Development Association. The interview committee, which included EDC representation, was very impressed by her qualifications and knowledge of the economic development field in Maine. We wish Tracy much success here with the city of Saco and her new position and all the contributions she will bring to us. Thank you. I announced this last time also, but if you'd like, I'll read it once again. We do have an RFP opportunity. The city of Saco is seeking proposals from qualified and experienced consultants and contractors. contractors to conduct a citywide wayfinding project. The project will finalize and design and content of gateway wayfinding and business park signage and provide a bid document and cost estimate to install the signage. The selected consultant must be an expert in design, wayfinding, and signage creation and installation. The RFP is available on our website, and those proposals are due back by 11:00 AM on October 31st. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for City Administrator Ken Ruff? Councilor Hatch?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Brian, I just want to make sure that we, is it Mr. Polk was our first speaker, that he gets directed to the appropriate city staff, so he, he had a series of questions he asked that I think could be easily answered for him if we could make sure.
Yeah, if you want to just check in with me, me and Pat in the back right after the meeting, we can, we can talk about some of those questions.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Okay, that brings us to item 12, council discussion and comment. Are there any council discussion or comments? Councilor Purdy?
Just a, Councilor Johnson had expressed his dismay that the Chapter 81 thing had been brought up again. And I would, I would agree with him if that, if this had been initiated by city staff where it was voted on, what, a year and a half or so ago. But I don't share that opinion simply because the residents of the city have the right to bring something before council when they, I mean, this was initiated by Mr. Hughes, so I don't see it as a waste of ours or anybody else's time. Thank you.
Councilor Berman, then Councilor Johnston?
Thank you. I'd asked a question about the undesignated fund balance earlier when discussing the playground use of ARPA funds. I'm looking at the June 27th, 2022 budget update, and it looks like at that point, due to unanticipated state budget sharing, we reached 23.17% of the adopted budget for the undesignated fund balance, and I believe the Finance Director, or I don't remember, Director Salas's new title, said at the time that we may anticipate some spending of the undesignated fund. I realize we just did spend some of that on the, on the fire station, but at the next time we have a budget amendment, I'd appreciate if we could get an update on the use of the undesignated fund balance also and whether or not it's appropriate to use that. Thank you.
Yeah, just responding. Gwynn is will have her quarterly budget update at the next meeting. It was going to be tonight, but it had to be postponed due to her schedule until next week, but she made this recommendation based on, on current figures to use ARPA over unassigned fund balance, and so I would trust the, the Budget Director's recommendation there.
Thank you.
Thank you. And Councilor Johnston?
Thank you. In response to Councilor Purdy's comment, I, I don't believe I said it was a waste of time. I don't believe anything that council takes before us is a waste of time. But what my point was, or overall point, is that most things in the zoning ordinance, you're not allowed to have repetitive petitions. It does not apply here, I'm fully aware of that, but it probably should, is my overall point, and we did vote on this, and if at somebody at that point in time had felt it was warranted to bring forward, they could have voted on it separately instead of as a group. But again, I'm not saying that, you know, this is a waste of time or that, you know, the resident doesn't have a legitimate argument. I think he does. My concern remains about that PPA from the Army Corps. Once we have it, we can actually figure out what we're doing. But with that said, I mean, my original comment, you know, I can't help, as I stated to several counselors earlier tonight, but, you know, sit here and notice that for the better part of four or five months, we've looked at extremely light agendas. I mean, I don't think this is an efficient use of council's time. When we look at some of the things that we could have reviewed in this time and were brought up and whether they remained back to the planning board and went nowhere, I think there's been more than ample amount of time to, to start addressing those. And so I will say that I hope as we move through the winter months, this council will, you know, be supportive of other counselors' objectives and desires to see things on these agendas. So that's my personal plea to you. I, I mean, to be quite honest, the last three years have been beyond frustrating from my perspective with really not getting anything done. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other council discussion or comment? Oh, City Administrator Ken Ruff?
Yeah, just, just one reminder, if there are any agenda items that counselors want to see on the agenda, I know we've, we've talked about this a little bit in the past, please email to me, email me those, those requests and they'll be put on the agenda for consideration.
Councilor Archer?
Yes, thank you, Deputy Mayor. I'll, I'll email you as you just requested to ask respectfully, but when we're bringing up ARPA, when council initially approved those, we had categorized them into different spending, so I'm thinking at the end of this calendar year, which would be about January, if we can update on how we've spent that money and which categories we put it, because we didn't include it with this playground request. I didn't see it as an issue because I definitely wanted it to move forward, but it would be nice to know how we've allocated our funds based on council directive when ARPA was initially identified. Again, let's finish out the calendar year in just like a January timeframe, just wrapping up 2022 would be great. Thank you.
Yeah, it's no problem to have that update, so we can bring it forward at the end of the year or earlier, if you'd like to.
I'd say January, allow December to occur.
Not a problem.
Thank you. Any other counselor comments or discussion? Okay, not seeing any. Moving on to item 13, adjournment. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Motion by Councilor Berman, is there a second?
Second.
Councilor Purdy? Roll call vote. Councilor Archer?
It's still early, no.
Councilor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Sure.
Councilor Berman?
Yes.
Councilor Hatch?
Yes.
Councilor Johnston?
Counselor Archer, I told you I could make it last more than 20 minutes. Yes.
Motion passes 5-1. And that adjourns the meeting for tonight at 7:19. Thank you all and have a good evening.